Our public rights did not see.
We, yes. I know we encounter several rules by protection and has to punish the public in its body. Public speaks is only one of those outfits, but historically it has been used to create an open forum where residents could share their views on organizations, punish the public in its body. Public speaks is only one of those outfits, but historically it has been used to create an open forum where residents could share their views on organizations before us or voice concerns about the issues in the city. Our public speaks rule has been under Ohio's status with the decency of its plan for openness and for the last two years it has taken a different turn. Public speaks has increasingly devolved into an unproductive and often hostile spectacle in place of certain children, led to department experiments on children, references to the Nuremberg trials, props brought in and laundry baskets, and repeated accusations that council members or city employees are involved in child trafficking and other conspiracies. We have been accused of profiting from taking children from their parents and of controlling judges' rulings and other outrageous falsehoods. It has become routine for a small handful of individuals to use public speaks not to inform council, but to perform for social media, creating content for their own personal fall under gratification. Some speakers never even look at us, they look directly to the cameras recording them for their online videos. It has also led to failed and overt threats, including statements that council members should be assassinated or hung. Recently, we have seen threats to release the social security numbers of city employees, blackmailing the city, and now the FBI is involved. This is not and has never been the purpose of public speaks. I have heard from many residents who no longer feel comfortable attending our meetings. One described it as a torso. This is heartbreaking and unacceptable. Eliminating this one provision, Rule 15, does not silence the public, it simply removes a forum that has been abused and weaponized. Every other avenue for residents to contact us remains open. In fact, council has dramatically expanded public access in recent years. We now have a communications director and a city alerts program. Council has an active Facebook page. We've invested in C Click Fix where residents can report issues 24 hours a day and track progress. We maintain multiple social media channels and every council member can be reached by cellphone, text, email, social media message, landline, mail, or office visit. Our agendas are online, available for download. We have a council blog in development and are currently obtaining votes for recording and live streaming our meetings to make them more accessible than ever. The city hosts public events where residents can speak directly with officials, police officers, and city employees. We want and deeply value public engagement. What we need to move away from is the chaos that has come to define this particular forum. Going forward, council will rely on other established methods within our rules for the public to address us. For example, public hearings may be called by a council member approved by a vote, allowing focused discussion on specific topics. Council may vote to grant speaking privileges to individuals for their defined topic in a period of time. These approaches allow for productive, topic-specific dialogue and bring us in line with how other major cities in Ohio conduct their meetings. In fact, many large cities do not have any public speaks provision as broad as Kansas has been. It is also worth noting that our rules apply only for this current council term, which has five meetings remaining. The next council will adopt its own rules and can revisit this issue. We'll evaluate how these changes are working, balancing the need for order with the public's right to address their government, and adjust accordingly. At the end of the day, our goal is simple: turn down the temperature, restore stability, and get back to doing the business, the people's business, in a productive, professional manner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As you know, as the president of the city council, it is my decision, my decision alone, how to arrange the agenda. I was torn this morning whether or not to allow people to speak or not, even though we've been facing death threats and all kinds of other trolling. I still felt that I was leaning that way until today, when I got a call from the police that bad actors are threatening to extort and blackmail not just us, not just people here at the horseshoe, but all of our city employees, our young moms, our family people, that they are threatening to expose their social security numbers and expose them. We had to have an email sent out by our protect department to tell people to take precaution. The FBI is investigating. And what I will say to anyone that thinks it's cute or funny, if the FBI finds who did this, it is a felony under both state and federal law. So, given those tactics, it is my decision, do not be angry at the rest of council. It is my decision, I will move public speech to the end like I have the last three meetings. What that means is the vote will be the vote. If they vote to retain public speech, you will speak. If they vote to eliminate it, you will not. So that is what I'm doing. And if anybody disrupts this meeting, I will have you removed, and you will go with FBI where it's not very nice. Hopefully you won't, and we will hear the vote and we will hear what council has to say about your feelings. Very nice. Hopefully you won't, and we will hear the vote and we will hear what council has to say about your feelings and how you vote. We will move speaks to the end as I have for the last three meetings. We are now in our informal resolutions, and we have one for Rule 15, public speaks of rule 15 of the city of Kansas, 2024, 2025 term. We don't care.
Madam President, we will be adopted for Resolution Number One, second.
We will be accepted to adopt Resolution Number One. Are there any other?
Madam President. I'll report for number.
All right, number four.
First off, I would like to request a roll call vote on this one. I pride myself on being a senior member of the House, okay? Not everybody sitting up in this horseshoe has battled four times the whole day, see like I have, okay? I've won by great margins in my war, and I've done it by maintaining, okay? I've won by great margins in my war, and I've done it by maintaining a pulse and an understanding of the law. Present. By maintaining a pulse and an understanding of the law. Present. To blatantly take a people's right here in its body due to, and they're going to, to be held accountable. Okay? There are a lot of people in this audience that are, I don't feel real good about going to these statements. That's validity. Okay? So if you guys, that, go. Columbus don't have these problems, Akron doesn't have these problems. Columbus don't have these problems, Akron doesn't have these problems because there is a structure in place to regulate what you talk about, how you even talk, and what to the chamber. And we have, we've lost our way. Alan Cholman is rolling in his grave right now. Cholman is rolling in his grave right now because we were embarrassing.
Yes, he is. Yes, he is.
I will say, just for the record, there was a meeting of the whole, we had a meeting of the whole to ensure, but did not attend. Okay. Now, Madam Geovasis. We tried to.
Well, it was coming out back in June, I believe.
Yeah. We tried to.
Well, it was coming out back in June, I believe.
Yeah. And then we had a meeting of the whole, which.
When we have a.
Now, number two.
I haven't fought for election in the city of Kansas often as far as yet. And I applaud him for his continuing efforts as a councilman for the city of Kansas. And we go back to the days when I was in Plain Township, prior to me being the county clerk of courts. Various issues, primarily annexation and stuff, but we worked together better than we did not even during those times. Public speaks is something in my entire career that has been near and dear to my heart. But I want the public to understand, even though First Amendment is constitutionally grounded stone, I did a lot of research and deliberation over the last couple of days. I don't take any vote lightly, but I've taken this one especially serious because of people's ability to come in and communicate directly to us. I, for one, keep a pulse, not just on a war in the whole city. I've had individual members or people that have contacted me, met with them, someone invited into my own home and cooked for them, to have conversations. Over the last couple of days, not knowing how I was going to vote, I've been called a democrat, told to go fuck myself, I'm evil, only because I said I'm deliberating. That's something that I have a right to do. Then today, around the same time as Madam Morris, I get a phone call saying that my social security number was breached, the FBI is involved, they verified the social security number of me, not only to mine, another member of my family which also happens to be a city employee. This is what this has escalated into. It's gone from discourse now to, we're going to threaten you to vote the way we want you to vote, because if you don't vote the way we want you to vote, we're going to disseminate your social security numbers everywhere. Me, my guest, disseminate my social security number, it's locked, put it on a billboard. I have no problem with people coming here with their passion, voicing their opinions, but we have rules. And let me tell you what, we've tried to enforce those rules. Disruption is not limited to who in the revised code only to stomp on your feet or click on your fingers. We've allowed that. Our public speaks has been more pride in any community than I know of. It's not us that brought us to this point because we don't want to listen to you. And I don't know what the outcome of this vote is going to be, but hey, if somebody wants to put videos up of me calling me a Nazi, a communist, or whatever else, I'm just as American as you. And I have a right to deliberate on my own, the way I'm going to vote, without telling them how I'm going to vote. For as many people who are sitting in this room against this ordinance, I've heard probably from just as many that weren't spored up because of what's taken place in the last couple of months. So this has not been an easy decision for me, and I'm going to read you something. Ohio State laws, specifically, the Ohio Meeting Act does not require public comment period for city council meeting, neither does federal code. Council has the right to legislate through its rules what takes place in council chambers. That's a fact. That is a fact. Today, even today, I didn't know which way I was going to go in this. Even after being told that my social security number was breached, and I agree with Frank Morris, your ability to speak to us, to me, is secret. I answer my phone calls, I go out to people's homes, I sit on their porches, I walk their neighborhoods with them. I make the appropriate phone calls. Every person in this administration will know I will make a phone call when I see something that needs to be corrected. But when we have devolved to the point, hey, can't be bans or death, I voted against that ordinance because it didn't sit well on my gut. It did not sit well on my gut. Nine times out of 10, it boils down to what feels right to me. It's not what an individual constituent says to me, or the group that is here for or against an issue. I deliberate on both sides of the issue, I look at both sides of the coin before I make my decision. Now, what Mariel, Madam Mariel said, if this would pass, this is only to the end of the year. And if this is, and if it passes and is brought back, the rules are going to be strictly enforced. They are going to be strictly enforced. You're going to address the chair, there's not going to be any dischaining against what took place in the past. And if it's not directly related to something that involves city business, it's going to be shut down. I want to let everybody know that. We have the authority through the Ohio Revised Code to legislate what transpires in these chambers, under our rules. And I did not, before I vote, I did not take how I'm going to vote tonight lightly. As I sit here right here at this second, I'm still on the fence because of what that means to me, your ability to speak to us directly at our council meetings. The last thing that I ever wanted was to get to this point. And that was maybe the fault of both sides. But going forward, this needs to change, that dialogue needs to be constructive, it needs to be in a manner that both sides can agree to disagree, to try to find something common that we can do to make the city better. Not one person on this council or in this horseshoe is conspiracy that I found out in the last four years, and I've done this a long time. Nobody is doing anything directly. And the one thing, the last thing I'm going to say, when it comes to CPS and the accusations are made, some of the things I find very highly questionable, other things I just think are bullshit, okay? Some of the things that happen to individuals, I have a skull over it, but I have my own opinion whether they're justified in their passion and their anger. Some of them I believe they aren't justified. And I've sat down with those individuals, and I will continue to sit down with any individual once they have a conversation with me privately or otherwise. I've done that my entire career. None of us are making a living at this. We ain't getting rich. We're not getting paid for kids, getting taken for homes, but I want you to understand something. It is CPS's choice to call Kansas PD to come execute some of these things that they're doing. They can't say no, they are bound by statute to go. They should be calling the county agency to do it, but they're not, they're calling the city to do it, and we can't change that. But the other thing is, I watch some of the videos online, when some of the people even in this audience, they go address other public bodies like the county commissioners and the Massillon City Council and some other places, I don't see what happens at those meetings that happen, in these meetings for the public. And I've overheard certain individuals saying, we ain't going there to do that because we'll get arrested. But we're supposed to allow it to continue. I promise you, coming the first year, I will enforce the rules, I will be fair, but I will be stern. You can call me a Nazi, you can call me a communist, I know I'm an American just as much as everybody in this room. That means you're right under the First Amendment to speak as you wish towards me. I have thick enough skin after this many years, I can take whatever you say, and I will keep doing my job as I see fit. I'm just ashamed, as a public body, as a city, that we've gotten to this level. You guys have a right to be heard, you do. But the city, the city council didn't bring this on themselves, because you got to understand, we don't control the police department, we don't control CPS, whether people want to believe that or not. Some people have some valid bargains when it comes to that. I will not disagree, but that is not my lane. I could advocate, I could go talk to people, they're going to listen to me as much as the man in the moon review, because I try. I hear you folks loud and clear, I understand your anger, but we need to channel that in a more constructive way so we don't get to this point. My phone number is published. Everybody in this room is welcome to call me with any issue they got, I will listen. And at times I will even invite you to my house so we can sit down and have a discussion, have a beer, have a hamburger, sit out on the deck and talk about it. You don't have to come to city council to talk to me. So that's where I'm going to leave it before I vote, so call me when you may.
Thank you very much, Madam Geovasis. Would you like now to be recognized, Madam Morris?
We give everybody Louis' address, we're all going to Louis' house to party. I'm firing up the black stun moka. Madam Geovasis, that was well said. Hats off to you, sir. Thoroughly impressed with your words. Still no, I'm still no, I'm still a no vote, but that was good stuff. Oh, you're still a no voter.
Thank you very much, Madam Morris. Okay. All right. Are there any further remarks? Hearing none, roll call vote for this, please. Mariel?
Aye.
Babcock?
Aye.
Jivises?
I understand why this is going to pass, but I have to vote no.
Maely?
Aye.
Kimbra?
Aye.
Skakleyon?
Aye.
Chris Smith?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Cooks?
Aye.
Morris? That's eight a's and two n's, Madam President. Thank you. The motion carries and formal resolution number one has been adopted, as was brought to everyone's attention. There will be a new council, new members, and a new president in the new year. Anyone who would sign up to speak, who would like to leave now and not sit through the meeting are welcome to leave before you make the.
I am a constitutional man, the Constitution, the United States of America, I am a citizen of the United States, I am a citizen of the public, and you guys are most certainly violators and propagators, that's what you guys are, that's exactly what Mr. Mariel is, Mr. Mariel is, filling the lives, don't touch me, don't touch me.
Let it be known from the media that they got to stay there two cents, but what the public say there. They got to stay there, they got to stay there. They got to stay there, they got to stay there. And that always the way of the city of Kansas. And that always the way of the city of Kansas.
That's what the mass fell here now under communications, and let's see a journal show of communications.
Starting to answer the email, start seeing the people in community, you asshole.
Can you please have your a's and f's for it out of the house?
You don't have a f's, you don't need to be escorted, you don't need physical violence brought against me because you're all tied. Now, citizens don't like pretty faces, just saying, hey, hey. This is, this was the reason why they voted no. You got to stand your side, you got to say your a's, let your f's. And just, you have a right to argue, Mr. Geovasis, and you don't have to say it to the people, how do you say it to react, Mr. Geovasis? Let's be real, how do you say it to the people? You said it was a b's. The city said it was a b's.
That's the reason, right there, y'all don't check that. Y'all don't check that, that's the reason, right there, not all of us should be punished for that, that's the reason, right there.
You are correct.
I am, I'm sorry, that's the reason, right there. Don't punish all of us for that, do not punish all of us for that. Take the b's here, do not punish all of us for that.
You took away people like Marie and Leon that actually did get helped from coming to city council to speak, you took that ride away from anybody else that's like them.
Ma'am, I didn't get away from anyone.
Yeah, you took it away from everyone else that might need help, because they got to come here and tell you what the problem was, and then maybe anyone else.
No. We're not going to debate this right now, but I am going to explain one thing that Madam George Fifth was going to explain, there will be, yes, she's the real chairman of the Senate to speak, but that Madam George Fifth was going to explain, there will be, yes, she's the real chairman of the Senate to speak, but there will be to do this, I think, guys, Councilwoman Chris Smith.
Do not handle, do not handle this, I'm a man of pride, and we have been, uh, here, for, back and forth, that's the reason why, I guess you want to hurt, that's what, that to, has, oh, come on, we, we on your, for a change, and this is where we run, council, we don't, we don't say nothing, y'all get up and leave when you want to say, and when it comes to kind of us to speak, you go, you don't hear, and it, not intent for you all not to speak, it's just that this, from here on out, it's going to be a proper way to do it, and it, not intent for you all not to speak, it's just that this, from here on out, it's going to be a proper way to do it, doing this, going to, accusations and threats, you know, we, we always stuck one on, to that, now, y'all, for real.
Thank you very much, Madam President, I appreciate that. And we're going to go on now to our first reading of this.
I'm going to go, I just wanted to list.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor or director of public service to interrupt a change order of dump off and jostling in our house, not to receive $29,240.94 for the traffic engineering maintenance building, GP 1446, authorizing the order to pay all moral obligations related to this change order, retroactively authorizing all actions taken in relation to its completion, amending appropriations for ordinance number 552025, and declaring the same to be referred to finance.
That happened last time, they gave this whole lecture and the people that it was for were gone, because they disrupted and left, and I'm like, why do I have, why do we need to listen to it? It's bullshit. These are mostly unhoused friends.
No peace! No justice! No justice! No justice! No peace! Who's street? Our street! Who's street? Our street! Who's street? Our city! Who's street? Our city! Who's street? Our streets! Who's street? Our streets! Who's street? Our streets! Who's street? Our streets! No justice? No peace! No justice? No peace! No justice? No peace! No justice? No peace! No justice? Nine, ten, eleven? Fuck twelve! Nine, ten, eleven? Fuck twelve! One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven? Fuck twelve! Fuck 'em, nine, ten, eleven? Fuck 'em, nine, ten, eleven?
Fuck twelve!
Fuck 'em, nine, ten, eleven?
Fuck twelve!
Show me what community looks like.
This is what community looks like.
Show me what community looks like.
This is what community looks like.
Show me what community looks like.
This is what community looks like.
Show me what community looks like.
This is what...
No justice?
No peace!
No justice?
No peace!
No justice?
No peace!
No justice?
No peace!
Who's street?
Our streets!
Who's street?
Our streets!
Who's street?
Our streets!
Who's street?
Our streets!
Jesse, you got us in trouble, motherfuckers.
No justice! No peace! No justice! No peace! No justice! No peace!
I'll let everybody out, y'all wait for city council to come out here, they're two fucking pussy counties.
They will, yeah, they'll wait.
They're taking through the basement exit to get out of here, y'all. They're not going to be brought in.
I'm out of here. Okay.